Budget deliberation process, issue sheets, that's you.
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said there. Hey, did I remember the financial version?
So, we're just talking about budget stuff.
No, the budget deliberation process, so.
Back on the budget stuff.
I guess Graham, kind of in the past, because we have new council, in the past, kind of the process was department heads provided you the budget and you did the presentation of the whole entire budget. I think from what I've heard from this council is they'd be interested in hearing the presentation from each department head, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah.
Rather than you presenting all of it, to have each individual department head present that budget to council individually and then you consolidate it later.
Yeah, that's great for me because I do way less work. No, the only concern I have with the department heads coming in here sharing is what they're going to present to you. So, they're showing you their ledgers, that's going to be a lot of information that, I mean, no offense, that you probably don't understand unless your background is accounting or managing hours. So, obviously, I would like to be there trying to help explain where some of these numbers come from as I help people.
Well, thank you, Sean, you too.
Yeah. But I think there's definitely going to be an informational tool here. I like to do them together with the full thing because it gives you the big picture and then you can break down into less. It's hard to do, I guess I see that it's a lot of extra work to build it and then change it and build it and change it, but what I had in mind, I was thinking, was the best way to do it was to knock off some of these external parties first, like easy exam, library, well, these could be fixed numbers in our final budget.
Well, being that I haven't been involved in budget before, I guess the first thing is we would have to know what it's supposed to, what were they asking, so we could actually ask the questions.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good point. So, our copy of our financial plan for last year, every report is on our website. This is.
Is that how the budget's presented?
That is, in my mind, that is how council should be looking at the budget, from the highest level, seeing the big picture, right? The concern with looking at a lot of GL accounts is that you get buried in the trees.
Yeah.
And I'm willing to share that detail, I'm not saying I'm not, I'm just, I just don't want you to get too caught up in small minutia numbers and not see the general direction the town is going.
Like, I wouldn't mind having the department heads come in or whatever, but I'd just be more looking like a little one-pager with some highlights.
Yeah.
This is, like, I don't want to know the, looking at getting four new radios.
No, exactly.
Like, I don't want to know that garbage, I just want to know, like, you know, this is, we're looking at the surplus this year, like, say, the museum, we're looking at a surplus, capital projects, brickwork and whatever, this is a big project, maybe a couple of other items done.
Yeah.
Like, I don't need to know how much money from parties and how much money, you know, this, this and this, I don't know if that's what you're.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But, I don't know.
You know, what I would like to do is continue on the same thing I'm doing, I send out my budgets to department heads and get them back, I'm going to compile it all together into the main format so you guys can look at it, then you can present their budgets as it applies to the main budget, the financial plan, you can see the big, the small, whatever you're interested in, and when you start making changes there, you're going to be interested in the capital, that's always something councils into him.
I wonder if it would be a good idea, not so much for them to actually present their individual department budgets, but for them to present, like, an operational, what they're planning on doing and then what their capital items are, you know what I mean? Not so much the fact that them coming in here and, yeah, well, our office supplies are going up by 3% this year or whatever, but if they came in and said, well, we're planning on making some of these high-level changes and this is a change to the budget, like, in concert with you, I guess, at the same time. That's my thought.
Yeah, one thing, well, for one thing I'm interested in is what we're actually, like, doing, like, infrastructure-wise, so.
Right.
Somebody says they're going to spend $170,000 on sign locks, because I'm new at it, I kind of like to know what that is.
So, most of that stuff falls under capital, capital listed out, usually there's a number of items that we didn't accomplish the prior year or have been counted out that hit, you know, security forward items, we'll have a bunch of new items, we have a 10-year plan in terms of what we expected in the hope of pie in the sky, and so, we thought we were going to fix this, but some of it's achievable, some of it's not, depending on whether we spent $14 million on a lagoon or not, if we don't have to, that comes up, what kinds of things?
Well, rather than having a micro, some micro picture, like, the, 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 like you said, humongous, which would take forever to read, why can't they just give us, like, the budget last year, let's say Sam's is $595,000?
Yeah, that would be on the macro, that would be on the financial.
So, then he comes up from that and he kind of highlights what he did, what he didn't do, whatever, what his costs are in the bottom line of how much he has, or he's under.
Yeah.
Like, just a simple thing for them to do.
Okay, you're just talking about a very summarized version of IGL with some notes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure they'd be happy to do that for you.
And where they're going and what they're doing, because when you get into micro computerized budgeting, it's like, it doesn't mean nothing, it's just a whole bunch of numbers, but like, we'd like to know if Sam had $595 last year, he did this, this, this and this, and he's got $10,000 left over. And then, kind of going forward to the next year, this is what I want to do, and whatever, he's not going to gain more money, he won't tell you right now, but.
Well, in the big picture, yes.
Like, make it complicated or make it simple.
A lot of what I'm budging, like, I remember I had this conversation with you on the phone, our trial balance is 51 pages, like, it's, it's an enormous general ledger, and our, it's not as simple sometimes as just saying, okay, we have a guy working here, here's his wage, it's, we have a guy working here, his wage is split into all these different places, so it's, it's difficult to budget on a man-by-man basis often because we look at a series of years and we try and look at averages to try and smooth things out, and then we add events that we know are upcoming, so this is what we plan to do, this is what we're going to do, this is the union, this, the union has agreed to a 1% increase, well, that's fixed, so we're going to add that in here, so we, you know, there is, there is estimation involved in this, just based on the budget and the complexity. I agree, I think seeing the big picture would be good, I'd be happy to sit down with anybody who wants a one-on-one with me to talk through it.
Well, it's not so much, it's not so much I want to know that that guy's charged the 400,000 GLs within the town and every hour that he's accounted for, what I would like to know, or what I would like to understand is that, how many people do you have within a department and how is it distributed? Like, are you having, is, is you got, you're hiring 10 guys next year, you got 40 guys? What's your overall labor budget looking like, what's your overtime kind of thing? Just so I have an idea of what it looks like.
And, like you said, some of that is available, some of it isn't, just based on the way our system's set up, we have multiple departments where one individual will be allocated out and the time isn't consistent year to year. So, one good example is a lot of the employees are shared between Public Works and Utility. Utility's got its own budget, like, and it has to, the province mandates, we have to report separately for it, but a lot of the things they do when they're replacing pipe or they're attending water breaks, that's not budgeted, like, very accurately year to year, it's based on averages because we know for sure it happens, so depending on where these guys end up year to year, it becomes difficult to know where their wage ends up.
Give them what's in their record.
Well, it, it just matters because it depends on how.
Saying, saying you took the wages out of the budget.
It doesn't matter for your purposes, for what you're asking for.
Well, we don't need to get into the details today, but we're going to get into.
I would definitely suggest that we meet outside of council meetings, like, film council meetings, because there's going to be a lot of questions, a lot of things that I can give a lot clearer, blunter answers outside of camera, I know that's.
Oh, that's fine.
And then, and then you can provide a better, cleaner picture to everybody in the camera session. That's how we've done it before, that's just the way we can. I'm thinking, you know, in mid-February, we should get together and I'm trying to present this to you guys, the latest we want to be kind of hammering on details is mid-March because this is due May 15th, the province, 40 days before that to make your public announcement.
And the provincial budget's March 7th this year, I think?
Yep.
It works out. It would be a good experience, I guess, it's, I'm hopeful this will work a little bit better, there's a lot of good, good stuff coming up on the agenda, I hope you can not spend $14 million.
Okay, so the plan is department heads will present, prior to, we'll hash this out as a group.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Everybody make us happy.
Make us happy.
Payroll and accounts. Who's doing that, disperse this thing?
Financial report first, sorry.
Did I miss one?
4.2. Graham?
Oh, sure, yeah.
4.2?
Yeah, financial report.
Don't leave yet.
Okay, so, here's a statement of operations up to the end of November, we're still anticipating a little small surplus potentially with the end-of-year drawing there, there is a number of things that still need to be adjusted, you know, time limits here, I don't see anything that blows me away, I'm a little surprised that Sam isn't spending all his money, but.
It gets talked to every year.
Stream budget, but, yeah, I, I don't see anything that blows me away, I'm not impressed by the extra revenue in some cases.
When you say a small surplus, I'm sorry, which one is that?
If you look at the bottom there, I did make a little estimation, I took our current net surplus from November, I backed up the policing costs, which I know are coming, I backed up some costs for, just based on our budget, one month of operations, less than user fees that we get, just going, you know, all the centers, fire and stuff like that. And, I made a little error adjustment because I'm sure it's going to be wrong, so worst-case scenario, I said $54,000, just looking at this point, in other words, an estimation, right, and we have what we have and I'm just trying to project forward a little bit.
So, $54,000 is projected?
Yeah.
Which is basically.
Which is, and that's what we want to be, right? And that, that does factor in the 123 that we're recovering from a prior year deficit as well, so, that is already factored in there.
Good.
So, last year, council cut your budget 10%, 10%? So, the CKPI money, right, that comes from somewhere?
It came out of the CDI reserve.
CDI reserve.
Yeah, so, hydro consists of something based on.
Archule 3, I think.
Archule 3. And we've just been, this is where we're allocating from this point. We get about $250,000 a year. So, it will be another year unless something changes, and I'm unaware at this point.
Yeah, that's our last year.
And then that would be it.
The community enhancement fund that we didn't spend, is that included in that surplus?
I haven't allocated.
So, it's still just, just floating there?
Right now, it's just in the reserve fund, if I apply it in there, because I don't know the value, I always kind of leave it to the end, I figure what the year is and I dump it in there, it's about $80,000 right now, so potentially that might suck, you know, you could still choose to not do that, I don't see the point in inflating a surplus if we have a surplus, that's my opinion, it would be more to offset the deficit.
In the old days, we used to have the nominal surplus, they called it, do we still have such a thing, whatever happened with that?
No, so, there's accumulated deficit, I think, right now, so, we, we did have a, a nominal surplus is just a year, right, so that's whatever the year is.
The retained earnings, basically.
The accumulate, yeah, just like retained earnings is a business, there's accumulated surplus, we had accumulated surplus in 2016 before we combined it up with KRC again, since they had a deficit, they drew in, I'm pretty sure we ended up in a deficit position, so.
So, that nominal surplus, whatever it is, is gone?
I'd have to double-check, I don't have it, I don't have the front, I don't want to.
It wouldn't be completely gone, but I know we don't.
It just gets lumped together, so I think, I think we're operating at a, at an accumulated deficit right now, it's.
It's pretty small.
I don't think it's very big.
That's what we use for how many years to kind of get our balanced budget.
Yeah.
So, it's very minimal left.
Okay.
I vaguely remember having this conversation, I'm trying to say that it'd be nice to see a few years of surplus to get us back to zero.
So, this, this surplus that we have now, if it stays, and if we add in the 85, so that's 140-ish roughly, so does that go to the accumulated surplus?
Correct, yes.
That's where it goes now?
Yeah, so there's, there's a few ways you can treat it, actually, I know in the past, we've just let it flow into the community surplus, I agree that that's the way, as long as we're trying to recover and get back to net zero, you can also decide that a yearly surplus goes into the general reserve fund, I know that's happened in the past as well.
See, there was always a bunch of confusion between that and nominal surplus, because nominal surplus was basically if we collected every penny that we had charged out, and that's the money that we, it really wasn't in our bank, it was that, it was like a debt owed to us, and we used all that.
Well, it'll even include, yeah, it'll include your AR, it'll include your EB, includes everything, right, so. And there is a significant amount of taxes receivable still, it's similar like this every year, I don't know where you go, this is what it looks like every year on the balance sheet at this point, but it's, it's a significant portion, that's cash, we don't have in our bank, you know, that we potentially borrow against the reserves. But again, overall, the picture's pretty good, like, it's not, it's, for this year, the picture's good, I mean, discounting that KRC stuff, which, that's out of your control, it's out of our control, in reality, it's good to have them in there because you can keep a stronger hold on it and, and manage that going forward, one of the issues, and I know I mentioned it in my notes there, was wellness center always seems to have a deficit, KRC always seems to have a deficit, and one of the issues there is when they come in the budget, there's always a push to cut costs, which don't end up being managed afterwards, like, so nobody, whatever the case is, the town contribution is cut down because they cut their costs too low, and then those costs seem to still reach those numbers, and then we see that deficit, so would it have been better to just know what that cost accurately is upfront, contribute that money to the town in a realistic fashion and then not have a deficit? Probably. Oh, it's great to cut costs, I'm not going to say you shouldn't cut costs, you cut costs, where are you going?
But they need to be realistic.
They have to be realistic.
Yeah, and you can't just.
You can't.
You can't just say, oh, I'm definitely going to cut this by 10%.
So, any other suggestions for people how to, to deal with this?
Well, we can talk a little bit about the budget, I mean, there's going to be a recovery of, for a number of years, we have that 123, I think that's three a year, so we're going to recover about $360,000 from that.
For the utility?
Well, that's just from our operating deficit from, from prior year, we just applied to the promise to recover that back as part of our taxes going forward, it was one, two or three years, I think we set it up as three, if you know what impact, typically if we are recovering your deficits, you don't end up backwards in the first place, right?
We had a deficit one year, a big one?
Ah, there was a couple of years there were deficits.
Why?
Again, I don't know the reasoning, it was before my time, I just, I filed the audits and, and was, okay, well, this year we're going to recover.
Which years were they?
I can't remember, it'll be on our financial plan.
Okay.
Again, we can talk about that, they did approve the two years, I'm.
The EBS, that's what I was talking about, the community enhancement, what's.
Well, but from the accommodation fee, we split that money up and we never spent last year's.
Yeah. Yeah, I can certainly see the, the merits of not dumping the, the investment in there if there's a reserve plus. And potentially, even if there is, I know this budget, I mean, that's, it's your problem, if you want to allow to see a deficit and then recover with your taxes, that's also an option, I, like I said, I'm always in the mind, you should try to recover those deficits so you don't end up in a backward position, as long as it's not going to. Utility is in a deficit right now, there's an outstanding billing still for the fourth quarter, the region comes out, I think she's just working on it now, breaking it up and checking it off, so there will be a little billing in there, but I suspect we're still going to see a deficit, a small deficit, based on that, so it was not part of the budget.
And, sorry, go back to the community enhancement, you can just do whatever you want with that, or what's the, like, just put it in anywhere?
Yeah.
Nobody asks any questions, you get $400,000 for community enhancement, we just use it to offset our, our, you know, our wellness center was over $400,000, so we decided to use our.
No, no, I mean, you need it to go somewhere, right, like, it's a, right?
But even though it's not community enhancement, I don't know, that kind of seems kind of odd to me, that.
It's. Anything can be community enhancement, right?
My predecessors, both have denied that it's been council-slash-fund, but it's council-slash-fund.
The terms, the terms of the, the accommodation tax by law are fairly vague in terms of.
On the community enhancement fund, one, yeah.
Again, this was my first year doing the budget last year, and it was, it was an attempt to try and manage some of the tax rates a little bit, I felt at the time, there was probably enough argument that you could find something in the year that you wanted to apply to, that you would normally pay it out of pocket for, we didn't decide at the time what that was going to be.
I, I just find this kind of, I don't know to offset one budget, but to me, that's like, well, it's kind of community enhancement, well, then, let's do some of the things we already talked about tonight that would actually be enhancement versus just throwing it for operational stuff, you know what I mean? Like, it's.
Yep, and it's free money.
Yeah, you know, and I know it's whatever in one hand, out the other, but to me, at the end of the day, if someone's going to ask you, it's nice to say, yeah, we did it for this, and that's going to enhance community versus, well, I don't really know, we decided to put it in at the end, so we were up $50,000, so we just threw it in the pot.
Well, no, no, you would apply it somewhere.
Yeah.
And it is part of the budget, so, to change the budget, I don't think you'd have any arguments if we're sitting on a surplus and you take it out because you're not going back to the tax rate, if you see a deficit and you don't put it in, then you're reaching back into the taxpayer's pocket next year, which is never what you want to do. Any questions about anything on there? Look, again, I feel like in terms of where we are in the year is reflective to where we should be for the most part, nothing that blows me apart, there's certainly things that I need to adjust, services, things like that, but just, I just kind of have time to do that, a lot of it just gets to the year end, I would like to be more proactive with that, but.
The 365 that Sam's under right now in Public Works, that's, that probably won't be that number at the end?
Ah, probably not.
No.
We did see a couple of things, and I think I put it in my notes, lower wages for holidays was incredibly low this year, now, I know December's not in there, so maybe that'll bump up, it was significantly lower than what we expected, I did talk to Sam a little about it, and he was saying, you know, there was some longstanding employees that are no longer with us, at the time, we came up with some of these numbers, and then some people have been hanging on to their vacations, so just to see those costs doing this year. There was some allocation issues based on some of the way things were going around before my time, that I had changed in terms of the hydro, the street lighting, things like that, that changed a little bit of where things ended up by department, so, those costs have probably shifted somewhere else, they came out of there, so.
So, I, I understand the premise, so, right now, we're showing a small surplus, in the event that Sam does came in, in under budget, puts, say, even $200,000, right? Shouldn't that money, instead of being used to subsidize the overage in other areas, shouldn't that money be tagged to go back into Public Works for work to be done on this year?
Oh, I don't think so, I mean, you could, you could put it into a general reserve and decide how you want to deal with it, but, I think you want to avoid a, like, a silo kind of.
Well, I'm just thinking that if we promised to do some work and if we didn't do the work, don't we still have to do the work?
Yeah, but some of it may be just where people ended up, again, he's got workers from utility and Public Works, sometimes the budget goes one way, sometimes it goes the other, we do have probably a deficit in the utility, probably based on where some of these guys are spending their time.
So, that needs to be tracked better.
What's that?
Where they're spending their time.
I might, not sure I want to.
Well, I don't know.
To track that.
Right, no, but, but I'm saying though, right, if, in my mind, if the utility is not collecting enough money, say, right, and the Public Works is subsidizing that, that's not really fair to the ratepayer.
I don't know how you even know that retroactively, like, it's great to look backwards 2020, but you don't know when you're making the budget if that's going to be the case, there's a number of rules surrounding rate changes in utility, of course.
And I get that, Graham, but with, like, Public Works, when, and the guys haven't seen one yet, but when you see the budget, it's very, very detailed, right?
Of course it is.
Right, it's very detailed, so for him to be under budget that much, either he filed some efficiencies, or they didn't do the work.
Or circumstances change.
But then they didn't do the work.
Not necessarily, because not, a lot of what we do here is not based on, like, a contract, hey, we're going to do this, 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 this this year, a lot of it's maintenance, right, so where you're spending your time is where the problems are.
But a lot of the stuff in the past, I'm not saying like, oh, I've been here before, but, I mean, I have, a lot of the stuff in the past, we would have, we would have, the paving, well, couldn't get the contractor, he was really busy, okay, whatever, I mean, I think it was three years in a row, there's allocated $80,000 that was there, so.
And that's not what we're talking about here, a lot of that stuff you're talking about would be capital, so, the beauty of the capital stuff is a lot of times, we're going to take this out of the budget, we look at it separately, if that sits on the budget and the capital side, we don't spend it, it just rolls over to the next year for you guys to talk about again, in terms of what the operating budget includes is usually no capital, right? Like, we're not, we're not doing big projects, they, they'll be doing, you know, PACOs, they'll be doing.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, $60,000 for asphalt and, and stuff like that, I mean, we will see, I guess, when the, when all the stuff.
You'll see where the materials are, for sure, I don't see a lot of, like, there's all these variances everywhere, I mean, nothing's going to be exactly what in this budget, I don't, I don't see those as the big, big missing pieces this year, and that's why, like, where the surplus is coming from, that's not where we're seeing it, it's, there was a few wage accounts, some hydro, like, some things which are out of this control or I'm changing allocations to fit better, things just, they continue to change, I don't feel better. I'm not disagreeing with you that better tracking is always, okay, but there's got to be a benefit to that tracking, I don't, like, I don't look at those where guys are spending their, their allocations, I don't have time, if that was something council wanted, we'd spend time looking at, sure.
Yeah, no, no, I just, to me, to be under budget that much, which is lots, right, if 300, if we say $200,000, he's under budget, what, 15% or something, 20%?
Well, and again, we'll see where it ends up next, at the end of the year.
That's quite a bit, to me, in my mind.
And knowing, knowing what those items are may help you.
Sure.
May help reduce your concern over it, like, obviously, since we're estimating based on prior years, when something improves, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it just, it's such a big change, you know, but so, and like, you hear from the public all the time, the roads aren't in great shape, and I hear from people that we have no money, but yet I see a line here that we're under budget, $365,000 right now, so in my mind, we didn't do something we said we were going to do, so if we didn't do it, that's okay, save the money, let's do it this year.
Well, and again, I guess you have to identify what those things.
Yes.
That's beyond the scope of what I would under, I know, right?
Yeah.
I can see where the, the numbers show, but I'm not going to know which jobs they didn't do, that's not.
Yeah.
That's not my job.
Cool, it'll be interesting.
Yeah, like I said, the, the budget is, is going to be an issue process for you guys, there's a lot of information, and we'll see where some of this stuff gets generated from, it'll be helpful going forward as you're looking at these, I, based on Kerry's email today, I, like, I would like to revamp this continually, I don't think that during budget non-adjournable is the right time, when I'm already very busy, I would like to look at this more in the summer, when I have a little more free time, make something a little bit more detailed, but simpler, if that makes any sense. If that makes any sense.
Any other questions on this one, guys? Nope. Thank you.
Pay period one and two, the amount of 208, 312, 28. And general checks for 355, 275, 59. And then on the next one, there is a separate check for Northern Building Support. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. A lot of these things are school payments, where you're going to see some of the larger ones. And just STICO, stuff like that. Nothing seems out of the ordinary. So we would require resolution, two resolutions, two per-fee counts. Are you finding that format easier to understand with the checklist things?
Oh, yeah. It's way better. Thank you very much. There's more to it, too.
How much extra time is it taking to do that?
Graham, what is it taking? There you go. It's worth it, then.
Any questions on this one, you guys? No? All right. Community Futures, Board Member Recommendation.
So Community Futures, I always had someone from the Town of the Paws sitting on their board. Bert Lajmodi was a council at the time, and he's just finished his ninth year of being on that board, and he has to step down now. So they're looking at organizations to sit on that board for a term of three years. We used to appoint a member to sit on that board, just like all the other boards. A number of years ago, we felt that we were getting too involved with a lot of the little groups, and we were used as quorum. So this is one that we didn't continue with. So they're asking, and I'm asking, does council want to send someone from council to be on this board, on the Community Futures? Or do you want to maybe ask someone from the CDC to consider it?
What is Community Futures?
Cedar Lake.
Cedar Lake, they're a lender.
Yeah.
Similar to a lender of last year's, aren't they?
Yeah. Julie Codi.
Yeah. Now, the Town of the Paws had someone there a long, long time. Even prior to Bert.
Yeah.
There's been some, I bet you 20 years someone's been there.
I would go.
You want to go?
If it's something that, the direction, yeah, I would, I would go.
Anybody else has a burning desire?
That's how you made you, like, had to go.
I gotta go. I gotta go.
So we'll do a resolution to appoint you for the three-year term?
Yeah. You might find it interesting.
I would check in with them first, because previously, when, after the last election, I was appointed to that board, but then they didn't accept me. So, and then that was the end of...
This actually came from them asking recommendations, so...
Yeah.
Primarily to Bert's term and stuff.
Yeah.
We had a meeting with them probably five and a half weeks ago, and there's a lot of programs that they can help with. A lot, a lot of programs, yeah.
It's good to have a seat there. Okay, so the Fire Commissioner's Office?
Who's all attending that meeting? It's a lunch meeting, because we need to make arrangements for it.
When is it again? Sorry.
The 8th.
8th?
The 8th at noon, and I think we set good times. I think you'd recommend...
Good times, yeah. We'll go Dutch, everybody can pay their own.
February 8th?
It's Friday. February 8th is a Friday.
Yeah, I should have known that, because they're up to the fireman's ball.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. Fire Commissioner?
I can, I can probably go, but I'll have to go like, like, just before 1:00 or whatever.
So, Bill, Trevor?
And it's at noon?
Yeah. We'll ask also about the U-Rink. That'll be a question we want to bring up to them, too.
Like I said, I'm out of town next week.
So if there's any other questions you could think of that you would like asked, just let us know.
I just want to follow the same rules as all the other communities, that's it. I don't want to be first, especially when it's costing money.
CDC Board Appointments.
Carrie, are you, sorry?
Yeah, she said so.
Yeah, I think so. And if not, I'll let you know.
Change of Board of Directors for the CDC. They have requested that we appoint Alan Gibb as Citizen at Large. This was a vacant position. And to appoint Jimmy Wilson as Ex-Official with no voting power. So we would require a resolution if that's okay with council.
Maybe not Alan, but...
Handy Van Mobility Disadvantage Transportation Program.
So we always sign this on behalf of the Handy Van, and it's for the contribution agreement. By signing this, we also agree to any kind of a deficit that they would incur. I don't recall us ever being in any kind of trouble. The Handy Van operates very well, shoestring budget, they've done a great, great job at this. But just, I want you to be aware of that. So this would be to sign the agreement and our $20,000 contribution. This has been a well, a well-done service. I don't know what more to say. I endorse this as...
It's well needed.
So we would require a resolution to sign agreement.
Everybody's good?
Yes. So Janet actually brought this up. She had looked through a paper in Brandon at one point, and it was about doing a little bit of cleanup in the downtown area. And Brandon launched a program, and they called it Tidy Up Tuesdays. And basically, they had like little contests and stuff for kind of beautification of downtown area. This topic came up again at the Downtown Beautification Meeting. So I think it's a great idea. I thought it was a great idea back then. What kind of money, if we were to consider this, what kind of money would you want to be looking at for budgeting for, you know, saying have coffee or whatever for the group that wins that week? Or you could do it monthly, it doesn't necessarily have to be a week.
Would it be helpful, somebody actually put together a program with a budget and say, came that way?
Sure, if you guys are interested in, we can definitely do that.
Obviously, we're always interested in doing something like this, but we're, you're asking, like, we don't even know what it is, and so we're saying, okay, give it some money.
Which is fine, but before we go and spend a bunch of time on it, is this even something you guys want?
Why not?
Yes.
Yeah? It's exactly what we want to do then.
We don't need to reinvent a wheel, they already have it in Brandon. So we'll just make contact with them, how they run it.
Yeah. The website, I asked her to bring this up. I don't know if you guys have had a look at the AllNet system and what they do? Have you looked at our websites on your phones?
I never looked at my phone.
Give it a go.
I, you know, this was something, if you recall, Chad, this did come up, because we acknowledged it, our website needed total revamping. AllNet has got a lot of different applications that we can use. I know some, either, some of you are going to AMM, or I would even request that he come down here and do a presentation to you guys to show you all what they can do. Meaning revamping our website, what other things they offer us. It sounds like a lot of money, but you get what you pay for. I'm sorry, like, that's...
Yeah, I personally would like him to come and see us.
For sure.
I don't know how you guys feel about that? Yeah, everybody agree?
Come see us, talk to us about it.
Go on, so you know how to find the AllNet websites that they're doing? Do you guys know how to find?
We've got links on the site.
Yeah, so go and check them out. Look at what the other municipalities are doing, because there's a bunch of them. And then go look at ours. And from a mobile device, ours ain't very good.
Who runs our website?
We basically do everything here, but it's run out of Ken Monroe and Swan River does it.
Oh, yeah.
At the time, it was fine, when we weren't doing as much as we were.
Yeah.
Like, it was just kind of there. Now we're expanding a bit.
Okay, we got a couple of things written camera.
Just one thing, before we get there, we talked usually this afternoon, like, how do we, when would we bring up other items, like...
You could do it right now, and they'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, because I would like to talk about bylaws and bylaw officers and what, kind of get an idea of how many bylaws we have, and which ones are we enforcing or not enforcing. The other thing is about, like, a community washroom, and we talk about, and I don't say I have the solution for it, but do we have an appetite of doing something that maybe provides some relief of our, of our homeless community? And I was going to ask, when we go on these trips, do somebody get a trip report? Like, so when we send, like, say, Chris is at a conference all weekend or all week, doing something, somebody's disease issue, a report?
No, but if that's something council desires, we can do that.
So let's put it on the agenda, yeah. So we'll put it on the agenda to talk about it at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's all I want, that's all.
Really, since you're ahead for the next meeting as well, like, you know, we've been visiting some of the town buildings and stuff, and some of the stuff could probably wait a while, and there's other things, like, we've been taking note of, like, for example, the washroom, the library there, that one. Like, are we, where's this information that we're writing down? Like, things that need, because some of the things, I think, need to get fixed fairly quick, and there's other things...
We could put on the agenda, facility review, review.
Yeah.
So do you mean, like, for the training course that Chris is on?
No, no, no.
No, 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 no. Sorry, I'm backing up a little bit here. So when people go away, are you asking for a report of every single time somebody goes away for a train?
So, okay, so just, so we follow somewhat of a procedure? We're putting it on the agenda, that we're going to talk about Andre's suggestion.
Okay.
And that's where you can bring up your questions.
Okay.
Yeah, so you got two weeks to just do on that.
Facility review, review, bylaws, bylaw enforcement, discussion of community washroom, and reporting for attending courses.
Bylaw enforcement, can we look at also the cost of the bylaw officer?
Yeah, they'll bring all that.
Oh, sure.
By giving them the two weeks, now they have a chance to get their act together.
Yeah. The other one is, I don't know if this is going to be on the agenda or not, can you provide what the formula is for the RCP? How many members we have? How many members were, did we lose, and they currently have over there right now?
Do we need that right now, or do we want to do that when they come here?
I want to, I want to have it so I can look at it, not that I'm going to solve the problem, but look at it, see what the members are, what would that be in the equation? Oh, we can ask him for like that overtime hours for driving those.
Things before the meeting.
You know, like, and then you can say, hey, look, this is what we're paying to drive some, you know, people that are from our community down here.
So he wants all the finances?
Yeah.
Before the meeting?
Yeah.
We'll do what we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, because we have to, because we have to come up with some sort of, some sort of rejigging of the formula, because they're not going to do it for us, right? So if we don't look at it, come up with a couple of, oh, yeah, well, that's not too bad, we can justify that to the rest of the province.
So bring it up for our next meeting.
I'll, like I said, I'll bring what I can, because what you just provided here is a lot of work, and we'll do what we can do. So in saying that, when items do come on the agenda, what's happened in the past, members of council are to fill these out to put on our agenda.
Okay.
So maybe we'll go through that next time, too.
Or just send me a sheet, I mean, I can...
Well, and to go through it with you guys to kind of explain how, but I'll add this, no big deal. But sometimes this is a good clear direction, because if we see it ahead of time, we know exactly where you're coming from.
Yeah, perfect.
So it is a good tool. It's worked.
And it gets rid of people just saying stuff.
Well, and it's all important, no, it's all important, and then you don't forget, right?
Because some people just want to ask you, do this, do this, and they really don't even know what they're talking about, so...
Oh, thanks, Ken.
No, no.
We're all lugs. Yeah, I'm some radiant money.
He didn't specifically mean you.
No, no, no. Don't send me a copy sheet, because I'm not going to come up with that.
So somebody move us into camera, please.
Yeah, so we resolved that, we know we resolved it in the camera portion of the committee of the whole, with Mayor Jakes in the chair to discuss matters requiring our attention.
There'll be no business coming out of it.
I'm just going to go lock up the door.